Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variances, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. I will now ask for the roll to be called.
Here.
Gallimore? Gingold?
Present.
McLennan?
Here.
Weinberg?
Here.
Rogers?
Here. With five members present, we have a quorum. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klotz, planning and zoning administrator Lori Pearson, and assistant city attorney Mario Tretto. This is a formal hearing, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time to accurately record the proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably questioned witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address, and be sure to sign in on the provided sheet. We are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. We do have three items on the agenda this evening. Is the applicant for 1315 Lee Street present? 1026 Davis Street? I see them waving out there. And 1825 Greenwood Avenue is also present. With that, the first matter on the agenda this evening is the approval of our minutes from May 20th. Has everyone who attended the meeting had the opportunity to read through the copious notes? And were there any edits or changes? I did have one question, which is on the second to the last statement on page seven. After the vote was recorded, it says without four concurrent votes, the ZBA recommendation is determined to be a denial?
That is correct per the ZBA rules.
So if we do not get four votes on a recommendation, it's considered a denial?
Correct.
Okay, because that's news to me.
The vote count is specifically noted to city councils so that they understand that the majority may have been for approval.
Okay, all right. That was the only thing that threw me, so with that point being clarified, I have no other edits. Anyone else?
No.
With that, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 20th, 2014?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 20th, 2014.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? I will note that any member not voting this evening was doing so because they were not present at this meeting. So with that, we move into our new business because we have no old business on our agenda this evening. And so the first matter before us is 1315 Lee Street. And I will ask that to please be read into the record.
Andrew Venamore, project manager representative, applies for major zoning relief to replace a 14.1 foot by 22.1 foot, one and a half car detached garage with a 16 foot by 22 foot, one and a half car detached garage. The applicant proposes a building lot coverage of 42.7 percent where a maximum 30 percent is allowed and where 41.6 percent currently exists. Zoning code section 6827. 62 percent impervious surface coverage where a maximum 45 percent is allowed and where 56 percent currently exists. Zoning code section 68210A. And a three-foot east interior side yard setback where five feet is required. Zoning code section 6828C3. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted June 3rd, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated April 31st, 1996, site plan, elevations, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark meeting minutes of June 18th, 2014.
Thank you. Before we begin, I have one question. On the motion in the spark minutes, it says the driveway was modified from 11 to nine feet, but wasn't it indeed 13 to 11 feet?
It was. I believe these are draft minutes, and that has since been fixed, so...
Okay, I just wanted to check and make sure that we were getting the right numbers.
Yes, it is 13 feet down to 11 feet.
All right, thank you. With that, if the applicant and anybody who wishes to speak to us on this matter could please be sworn at this time by raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address for us, please?
My name is Andrew Venamore, V-E-N-A-M-O-R-E, 225 Oakmont Drive, Deerfield, Illinois.
And if you could tell us, please, about the proposed project?
Sure, thank you, Chair. So, folks, the case before you this evening is a replacement garage that intends to remove an existing very decrepit structure that's on the property right now. We are going back. The project intends to put the garage back in essentially the same location as the existing structure. It will be slightly larger than what is there now, based on the fact that that car garage is very minimally sized in width. It has a decent depth, but at only 14 feet, it is rather narrow. So, the owners have proposed to increase the size of the garage, like I said, very minimally, to 16 foot by 22 foot structure, which will give them the sort of the practical space that they're looking for. And the only other sort of reasonable change to how the property lays out at the moment currently, there are ribbon, it's a ribbon driveway that gets them up into the structure. The proposal intends to make that a more substantial driveway. As the Chair mentioned during the spark meeting, staff requested that we reduce the size of that driveway from 13 feet to 11 feet. Since that meeting in consultation with the owners, we've decided to reduce that again to the width of the garage door. So the garage door is nine foot. They would be happy, and are offering basically to reduce that to nine foot for two reasons. One, to reduce the intensity of that second variation, the impervious surface variation. And also, basically, from their standpoint, it doesn't really need to be a heck of a lot bigger, a heck of a lot wider than the garage door is. So, if staff could look at that, I mean, we're going to take off 40 square feet from the amount of impervious surface that's listed on the variation request as it relates to that feature. What's really driving this variation is the size of the lot. In consideration of replacing the structure, which is essentially falling over as it stands on the property at the moment, Andy and Lisa, who have been living in the house since 1996, understood that it wasn't really practical to get even a basic two-car garage in there, which would be 20 foot wide. They understood that, based on the size of the lot and what they like to do from a gardening standpoint and kind of keeping the open space that they have on their lot, they decided just to keep it as a one and a half car garage. However, as you can see by the numbers, the variation requests are pretty substantial. And that's essentially driven by the fact that this lot is 50 percent, only 50 percent the size of what a kind of a standard lot in the zoning district would be. So understanding that, they decided not to go for a two-car garage, even though they have two vehicles. They tried to keep it, you know, in about the same size as what's there now. And it made sense for them to go to a full driveway as opposed to the ribbons, because by parking that second vehicle on the ribbon driveway, no grass is growing in behind that garage as it stands at the moment. So it ends up just being a huge big mud pit during the winter anyway. So their thought was to make it a full concrete driveway, as we've discussed, or as I've suggested, they'd like to reduce that down to just a nine-foot width anyway. And that will give them a practical solution to the situation they have where they have a garage at the moment that's essentially falling down, that really does need to be replaced. Unfortunately, in any size of garage that would go back in there, it's going to need a variation simply because the lot is too small. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this point.
How long has the existing garage been in its location?
It's been there, we think, since the previous owner was there.
Previous owner?
He built it...
Which was when? When did you buy the house?
The house dates back. Previous owner lived there a long time ago.
If I could ask you to please come to a microphone so that any information can be Your name, please?
James Weingartner.
And if you could just kind of reiterate what you just stated so that we get it on the record, please?
The house dates back to 1906. The previous owners lived there, I think, about 50 years before we moved in in 1996. So, we just, we don't know when the garage was built.
But it's been in the same location since 1996 when you moved there?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And for the record, we have done some quick calculations, and it appears that taking the driveway down to nine feet reduces about 1 percent. So that would take us down to 61 percent? 60 percent? Which we're currently at 56 percent, and 45 percent is allowed. There are no plans at all to change the curb cut, anything like that. All of that will remain exactly as it is?
Correct. What's getting replaced is from the back of the sidewalk up to where the new garage is. Everything forward from the sidewalk remains as is.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board?
No.
No.
No other questions from the board? Is there anybody else who wish to speak to us on this matter? Seeing no one, if there's anything you'd like to say in summation before we go into deliberation?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will close the record and begin our deliberation. Based on what I'm, not getting a lot of questions, I'm assuming that everyone is kind of in agreement that this is a decent proposal before us. What we will do is go through the standards in order to find, for approval of any variations, we have to find that a number of standards are met. And so we will go through those at this time to determine if this project meets those standards. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment of or property values of adjoining properties. The matter's been noticed, and we don't seem to have anybody here opposing. It also appears that we are updating an existing structure which is desperately in need of repair. So I believe that standard number one has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. One of the areas of the zoning ordinance that we're concerned with usually is trying to get cars off the street, provide off-street parking where available. That's kind of the only thing that I can see that really fits in with the zoning ordinance here, other than just maintaining decent quality properties. And obviously, updating a dilapidated structure with something new is in keeping with that. So standard number two is met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This is one of those small substandard lots that we often find in Evanston, where a corner lot had been subdivided and a second property placed on the alley, and therefore making this an extremely small, I think I read somewhere 75 by 50 or something like that was the size. But it is a very small lot, and so this property is peculiar in that case. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Again, this is not a situation that's been created by them. And obviously, having a garage which at some point will probably give way is not in their interest, and so replacing it with something newer is, makes that standard met as well. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Adding a new garage does not necessarily increase property values. Bringing a newer one in will hopefully help property values, but there's no additional income that's going to be extracted from this. So that standard is met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. We've heard that the existing structure has stood since at least 1996 and probably a good number of years before then. And so the fact that the garage needs to be replaced, and the fact that it is a small lot, is not something that has been created by the current owner, so that standard has been met. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the ZBA. Again, there was discussion at one point of putting a two-car garage in, but they have decided to go with a one-car garage. The garage size that is being proposed is not a drastic difference from where their current garage is, but does give them a little more leeway for some of the vehicles, which are a little bit larger today. So I feel standard number seven has been met as well. Does everyone agree with my findings on the standards?
Yes.
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 With that, I will ask if there is a motion for approval?
Sure. I move in zoning case 14ZMJV-0061, 1315 Lee Street, that we approve major variations for a building lot coverage of 42.7, actually, I'm sorry, what was the corrected? Oh, no, that's the impervious. Where a maximum 30 is allowed and where 41.6 currently exists. A variation for a 60-something percent?
60.
60 even?
60 even.
60 percent impervious surface coverage where a maximum 45 is allowed and where 56 currently exists. And a three-foot east interior side yard setback where five feet is required, with the following condition, that the project proceed in substantial compliance with the documents and testimony presented tonight.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of 1315 Lee Street, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With five votes in the affirmative, the motion carries. Good luck with your project. The second matter on our agenda this evening is 1026 Davis Street. I'll ask that that please be read into the record.
Daniel Kelch and Marty Kless, contract purchaser and owner, apply for major zoning relief to construct a two-story commercial building. The applicants request a 9.9 foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is required. Zoning code section 61138E. And zero onsite parking spaces where 31 parking spaces are required. Zoning code section 61635. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are variance application submitted June 9th, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey, site plans, elevations, images of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark draft meeting minutes excerpt from April 25th, 2014. Additionally, at the beginning of the meeting, an email was handed out from the city's fire plan reviewer that notes that the fire escapes at the back of the property will have to be enclosed, so the 9.9 foot setback will be to the rear wall of the building, whereas the plans tonight do not reflect that.
So how wide is that fire escape? How much further will that push us?
Right now, on the plans seen, shown tonight, the wall is at 15 feet, but once enclosed, it will come either right up to that 9.9 feet, or I don't know if the applicant would be able to push it back at all more than that.
Okay, thank you. I will ask that anybody who may be speaking to us on this matter, please raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. I'm assuming you are the applicant. If you could please tell us your name and address?
Sure, I'm representing the applicant. My name is John Myefsky. I'm with Myefsky Architects at 630 Davis Street, Suite 500, here in Evanston.
And if you could please spell your last name?
Sure. M-Y-E-F, as in Frank, S as in Sam, K-I.
All right, thank you. And if you would please tell us about your project?
Absolutely. The existing project is located where everybody probably mainly knows it as Tom Thumb right now, but it is at 1026 Davis. And currently, there is an existing building on the property. And this actually pulls it up and gives us a really good indication of where it sits in relationship to Davis Street. Fundamentally, the building that we're proposing to put back very much fits into the exact same footprint of the existing building. The existing building is approximately, this is the rear of the property, this is Davis Street. The rear, it's approximately 9.9 feet at this side, and a little bit larger than 10 feet at that side from setback from the rear property line. And there is an easement for access back and forth for vehicles and pedestrians along this little strip that takes us out to the street. What we're proposing fundamentally is to take down the existing building and simply replace it with a new building that would be at the same exact location on the first floor, with the exception that we were trying to pull that rear wall back, and that's what your plans show, but the variance is requested for 9.9 feet. Our hope was to pull it back 15 feet, so the wall of the building would be further, but there'd be two open fire stairs that would actually go across the back. We've just found out that the city has said that, and I'm, we're fine if we need to enclose them, but I think there are two exceptions that we can show the city that would allow us to leave them open. And the hope was that would just kind of pull the mass of the building back. But initially, the main idea is that we still want to have the rear of the building be used as a loading area, and to have that qualify and not have to come here for a variance for the loading area, we need at least 10 feet in width. So we're proposing to push the building back 10 feet from that rear property line, which is exactly, for the most part, pretty close to where it exists today, and rebuild that wall. Economically, we went through it, we looked at it. It's not financially feasible to rebuild the building. Without going through a great deal of work, that would actually cost more than literally building the building new. We're not proposing to put a basement below the building. It'll be kind of a slab-on-grade building. And the second floor of the building will reinforce the street front. I think if I, do you mind taking me to the next one, should this work? That's good, just, I think, great if Melissa don't mind leaving there. That just kind of shows the massing to everybody. So here's the site along Davis. This is an aerial when we look at the front of the building. Right now, the front half of the building is two stories. The back part is one story. You can see there's a small second story up here, and so there's a center part that has a second story all the way across is the full building. The alley is just showing you the rear location of where fundamentally the building exists today, and we will be rebuilt. Next?
John, if it's easier for you, I do have your spark presentation.
Okay.
You have controls now.
Excellent, thank you. So we just went through this portion. Here's the footprint of the building as we were proposing it. Again, at the rear of the property, fundamentally, we're looking to get relief from the 15-foot setback to 10 feet. The building itself will be two stories all the way around, although there is a large open terrace at the front of the building, which sets back the building. But as we'll see, then it actually becomes a terraced area with a trellis up above to reinforce the street front. I think most people are aware, but on Davis Street, there actually is kind of an overlay district that encourages and actually requires a two-story structure to reinforce the 24-foot height. The building, in essence, on the inside is going to be kind of split down the center on the first floor. There'll be a main entrance at the front that will lead to an elevator and a stair. Within it on one side, which is actually on the east side, will be two restaurant concepts. One will be Taco Diablo, the other will be Lulu's. They'll have a shared kitchen at the rear of the property. And then on the west side of the property will be one retail space, which could be divided in half, but most likely will end up just being a single retail space. The second floor, when you'd go up this main stair, would take you up to a small little lobby area. Off of that will be a restaurant, back-of-house kitchen area, a bar area with a small restaurant. This will actually be a third concept. And at the front of that will be a large terrace which overlooks the street with the trellis above. In addition to that, there is an event room, which will be used as well as the space, and actually have access out to this terrace area at the front. The rear of the building will have two fire escapes. As we've discussed, if they're enclosed, we can just assume that for today, they would just lead down and exit out. Here you see it, below those two fire escapes will be enclosed, an area for four trash containers, so those are behind a door and in a closed area. And then we have the two loading docks which sit across the back of the building. Building itself basically follows the streetscape in that we're trying to reinforce the mass. It's taller than some of the other buildings, but we're trying to go from this required two-story height and step down to the one story of the existing building that is located to the west. We believe that's a pretty historic structure and probably has a really good chance of being there for some time to come. So in essence, we're hoping that the building kind of goes from two stories, slowly brings you down to one story, but has an open element that reinforces the street. The back of the property right now, if we enclose those elevate, the actual stairs, then there'll just be a wall which will go over this portion. Right now, the stairs are covered, and they're open, but if they're simply closed off, we'll do that. Basically, this area that looks in this kind of triangular shape area would get filled in. These are already filled in partially down below, enclosing those two areas for trash. The street kind of view, looking at this, if you just stand across the street, look a little bit back, gives you a feel of the building. What we really wanted to do is kind of divide this up, so that there would be a strong central entry, which would be accommodating and really something that would draw your attention to the fact that there's something else going on the second floor, and is intended and actually is the primary way to get up and down to the second floor event space with the two stairs at the back. And then there's a recess entry here, a recess entry here, and kind of an architectural element and another architectural element with a railing that goes across. We wanted to put the open terrace space at the front of the building to reinforce the street, but also to show that there's activity up there, and mainly to keep it away from the residential apartments, which are located on the south side at the back of the building. Fundamentally, we intend that back rear wall to be an acoustical wall, so that we can keep any sound away from the neighbors that are located in the residences to the south side of us. And this just gives you a view, if we look down Davis Street, of the massing of the trellis. Most of the building is actually concealed behind the trees. This just walks you through kind of some of the different materials that we're using, which really are curtain wall system for the storefront. There is steel that will reinforce and frame the glass areas. We're using kind of a wood material like epe on the central element and then across the upper portion. And then we're actually using a tile, which has a texture to it that is similar to wood, but is more durable for the retail down below. And then a steel trellis up above, infilled with the wood material that's on the wall is kind of a trellis element, to provide really screening up above and to reinforce that second floor terrace area. So that walks you through all the materials. The other big item on our application is a request for relief from parking. The existing building footprint that we're replacing does not provide parking. It is not practical for us. We have quite a unique hardship. I don't know of any other property in Evanston that is landlocked like this one is. It actually does not have an alley at the back of it, but it has this little private access point, which would not be practical for vehicle traffic, nor do we believe that the city would actually ever encourage or support the idea of actually putting a curb cut off of Davis Street to create parking. That creates a really big, major hardship, because we literally would have no way to do it. The structure has been there for a substantial time, and we're really just asking for the opportunity to rebuild what was there in a new building with a more appropriate second floor area that is larger, we do acknowledge that, than what is there existing, but we have no way to actually provide the parking, so that's the reason we're here for a variance requesting for that. We don't think that any strict, really, way of working within the current guidelines for parking would allow us in any way to provide the parking that would be required for the building. So we can't really find a way to do that. We're not trying to do this to really extract... We're not trying to do this to really extract any extra income. We're just trying to make the property viable, make it work within the downtown area, and reinforce kind of the existing fabric of the neighborhood as it exists today.
So I have some questions. Well, I'll start with the parking. Is the, are you the owner?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you amenable to a condition where employees of the retail and restaurant establishments would not be allowed to use the street parking on Davis?
Yeah, the, I've operated two restaurants, Lulu's and Taco Diablo. We've never allowed our employees to park.
If I could ask you just also to state your name, please.
I'm sorry, yeah, my name's Dan Couch, and I, Lulu's and Taco Diablo. So we're looking to put those restaurants back here. We've never allowed any, most of our employees are local anyway. They don't even drive, there's very few cars that we bring in anyway. But even of those, we never allow them to go out and feed meters or do anything of that nature. Once they're locked in, they may not leave the premise, so.
So yes, you're amenable to that condition as part of our consideration, then?
Whether you're amenable, I would never allow my employees to do that, so, yeah.
Okay. Can you, back to Mr.?
John.
John, thanks. Mayewski.
Yep.
Can you explain the need to have the rear setback at 10 feet rather than 15 feet? What's, what actually drives the need for that?
Well, it was, it was, it really is twofold. It's one, that's the minimum width that's required for the loading dock, so if we put the building any closer back, then we'd be asking you a variance for the loading dock, and we're required to actually have two loading dock spaces, which we do achieve by what we're showing, so that's the only way we can really get that space in it. I suppose it would be practical to say we'd go to a zero setback and then have loading inside, but that really isn't practical for what we're trying to propose. So if we put loading where it's required, because that little piece of the property behind the other building is not our property, we're just allowed to go back and forth across it as an easement, we, we would, there's no other way to get around the loading requirement. So that determines the first location of why we need 10 feet. And then the second reason is really because that's the location, as we believe it, where with two open fire stairs, as long as we keep those stairs 10 feet away from the property line, and the structure is no higher than two stories, those are the exceptions that do permit us to have the open stair. We just found out today that there was some question, so we haven't had a chance to have that discussion. If, if by some reason, the city overruled that and we were required to enclose the building, the stairs, we would just enclose the stairs. But those two things are the fundamental guideline of where we get to 10 feet, and then there's the practical reality that that is actually the location of the existing building.
Are there existing load, I'm confused, are there existing loading docks that you're not replacing? Is that the idea?
They're currently across the back of the building, and maybe, our presentation doesn't have the survey in it, but in this area right now, there is a strip that's approximately 10 feet wide all the way across the existing building. So fundamentally, they are the current loading docks for Tom Thumb, and we're simply just trying to keep those in the same spot.
So you're not replacing the loading docks?
We're not replacing them, we're just, they're just going to stay where they've always been.
And then, so the idea behind the 10-foot request is that you're going to build the building, the new building, up to the existing loading docks?
Correct.
Okay.
What kind of truck service the restaurants, or would service the restaurants?
I'm not sorry.
Size of the trucks that you anticipate for deliveries to that loading area?
Most, probably, very a lot. A lot of our purveyors just come in vans. Usually, the biggest trucks that come to us would be a C-Class truck. On occasion, sometimes, a big purveyor might send in a bigger truck, but in general, for the most part, we're either vans or C-Class.
You're not getting Cisco deliveries?
Oh, we will get Cisco deliveries, and sometimes we will get large trucks for that. But in general, they tend to bring us C-trucks, is what they've always historically done, so.
And, and your calculations for parking, did you use the dining area or gross of the whole building?
We actually went through and removed the things that were not required, so it's...
Okay, so this is the net?
This is the net, yeah, taking mechanical out, all the things that we were supposed to.
Okay.
What's the, what's the combined expected patronage of the two restaurants?
Seating capacity?
Oh, seating capacity, grade level has about 60 and 60 on the two restaurants, Lulu's and Taco Diablo, which would be the same size as what Taco Diablo was. Lulu's is smaller, but 60 and 60 roughly. Upstairs, bar and restaurant up there, not counting that outdoor dining deck, would probably be another 50, 60 people also. The dining deck, though, we're going to develop that as, I guess you can say, two parts. Some of it will be for people to dine and sit on the deck, and some of it will be just for lounging, not necessarily having to have a full meal, they can, you know, they can have a little snacks and have a drink outside, so.
And what are your proposed hours of operation?
They'll be just like we've always run, so we'll open at 11:30, we'll close. Lulu's and Taco Diablo would close early on Sundays at 9, 9:30, we'd close at 10, 10:30 during the rest of the week. On Friday and Saturdays, we'd stay till 11, 11:30. We'll probably retain those hours. We may go till midnight, something like that, but I'm too old to be sitting in bars till 2:30 in the morning, so we're not going to operate like that.
A couple other just kind of general housekeeping questions. How many employees do you expect to have in the two retailers, or, I'm sorry, in the two restaurant establishments? How many will you bring in if you're doing events? And how many do you anticipate roughly for retail?
Counting part-time employees, I, when we had both restaurants up and running, we had almost 70 employees. That's counting part-time, too, and part-time could be very minimal. So I anticipate to have that many, plus probably a few more will be coming in. That event space isn't really going to require large numbers of staff, we're just talking a handful, three, something like that, to service that area. During the summer, when that outdoor patio is operating, it would probably need to bump up another three, two to three people for sure, to service that outdoor patio.
Just to clarify, the 70 employees is total number, not per shift?
Oh, no, not per shift, no.
Okay, yeah, I think...
Total number of employees that I had on my payroll.
Did you want to hear per shift?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask next, was, so, given any typical time, realizing lunch and dinner will be probably slightly different, but how many people do you anticipate being?
Yeah, let's do a quick count. I mean, in general, we would run three waiters on the floor, on each restaurant. We would run one busboy in each restaurant, one hostess bartender, depending on the shift. There'd be three to four cooks, nine, ten, I don't know, pop it up to 12.
Okay.
So, there'll be some consolidation, because we're doing shared kitchens, so I don't need to duplicate dishwashers, for example, so we'll be able to keep some of that staffing a little bit tighter.
I think I read in the packet that you plan to offer valet parking when you do host events, is that correct?
Yeah, I, you know, parking is something that if, the type of events we want to do there, we're hoping to be able to do a lot of varied events, you know, we're thinking, oh, we could potentially do a little anime film festival, say, for example, for three nights a week or something at some point, or we can do different events all the time. But I'm thinking also that if we were to rent the space, say, for a bat mitzvah or something, that would probably attract families, which might have some elderly people there. So the thing that services my customer best is going to be valet, because, you know, grandma's not going to want to walk a block or something like that back and forth, especially in the winter to get in and out of the space.
Right.
So I think the best way for us to service people is to valet them.
So where are you going to put those cars?
Well, I haven't approached the owner of the building yet, but my thought is that the building directly to the east of us, that footprint, I don't know if you have a plot survey that includes that building, they only occupy maybe 20% of that footprint of that land there. The rest of it is just vacant. They have a few tenants that park there, you know, they have like maybe four apartments, so there's four or six cars back there. You could probably put, you could probably put 40, 50 cars back there, it's huge.
Or the city lot.
Or the city lot, which is exactly, right, it's just on the other side of Davis Street there. I don't know if the city actually owns that or leases that property, but when we opened, when we were running Taco Diablo, that lot, I used to park in that lot when I was working there at night. It was seldom anyone was in that lot, it was a very underutilized lot, so.
I take it, having operated on Davis Street, that you understand the city's litter plan and garbage collection, right?
Yeah. I mean, that's partly also why we're trying to enclose that garbage rooms back there, is, you know, at the end of the night, restaurants generate, you know, a lot of garbage and a lot of bottles, and, you know, having that clanking around outside in the alley with an apartment, residential apartment right next door to us. So we're hoping to avoid, you know, we want to be as good neighbors as we can, so we're hoping to keep that on the inside and keep that noise level down as much as we can.
I would also just remind that we are looking at proposed variations that are not a special use, which is what a restaurant would typically come to us for, so our typical...
Not a type 2.
Right, so we aren't going through a lot of this stuff. I mean, it's good to kind of know some of that information, but just keep in mind that this is not a special use. Are there any other questions? If not, I saw that there were some other people who wanted to speak to us this evening, so whoever would like to come up first, I don't have any, any names or anything, so we'll just kind of do this when someone comes up. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
They always make podiums too short for me. My name is Bruce Boyer, I live at 1518 Oak, which is a block south of the proposed development, and I got to tell you, I'm really conflicted. My heart sank when Taco Diablo burned down. I love that place, okay? And when I heard that they were going to resurrect it, I said, this is terrific. In fact, my wife is Mexican, so she really liked it, okay? But the worry is parking, okay? I live a block south on Oak, and already the parking there, you wouldn't think, because it's a residential area, but the parking is already pretty strict. And 31 parking places required, zero supplied. Now, I guess my essential question is, has the city done a traffic engineering analysis of the parking situation there? They ran a restaurant before, and I didn't see much of a parking problem, certainly, but if they're going to have a special event space, and they're going to run two restaurants, I suspect that the load will be much larger than it was at Taco Diablo and Pine Yard combined. But I don't know, that's my guess. So you're nodding your head, I don't know, has, has the city looked at this? You know, when I sit in my condo and I look out the window at 3:00 in the afternoon, I see all the postal workers walking past me where they go park their cars, two blocks south. That's how dense the parking is already. I'd love to have this development work, and I'm very pleased to see that the terrace will be on the Davis Street side, so the noise will be directed toward a commercial district and not a residential one. And, oh, the shrimp tacos are really good, you know, but it's a deep worry, and I represent all the people in my condo building, and I'm sure other people who live on the street, and the last thing we would want, and it would be such a royal pain in the rear, is to have to go to a permit parking system, okay? So that is, my essential question is, has this analysis been done about the parking? I'm pleased to hear they're going to do valet parking. That would alleviate something. I live right down the street from Pianciro, which has always had valet parking. We're going to have a museum open on that block, if it ever gets built. Lot of issues, but basically, they boil down to, will the existing parking take the added load? Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Boyer? I, point of clarification.
Just to clarify, the city did not do a parking study specific to this plan.
Yeah.
However, when the city garages were planned out...
Right.
Parking studies were done...
I'm sure.
Specifically to note the idea that multiple lots in the downtown will not have their own parking, and none of the city garages are currently at capacity, so they would be able to take the load.
Okay, you mean on-street parking or the, or the municipal lot?
The, the garages.
The garages, okay. Thank you. Any more questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Boyer. I saw a couple other hands.
My name is Frances Anderson, I live at 1640 Maple Avenue, in a condo building, and I just want to reiterate the concerns about parking. It is horrendous to try to find a parking place right now. And if people are going to be parking and going to a restaurant, the two-hour limit's going to interfere with some things, I think, if they're going to try to get a meter. And I, I would suggest that the owner approached this, where this other open land is, to see if something could be worked out, because if it could, that would alleviate a lot of concern on a lot of people's part, but eliminating parking is a real issue, as far as I'm concerned and as far as my neighbors in my condo.
Thank you. Are there people who wish to speak to us this evening?
My name's Mike Amoy, I live at 1016 Davis Street, and my family owns a property just east of Tom Thumb, and I'm concerned in that, I want to know what's, how they're going to, what's, there's like, almost, it looks like a common wall between us. I want to know how they're going to, if they're going to do construction, if it's new construction, what they're going to do as far as how they're going to tear down the space, and how that's going to affect our property, and if it'll affect it in an adverse way in any way, and to be able to address that.
Okay. I mean, obviously, anything that, that is going to be constructed, going to be done, would have to go through proper permitting, making sure that it does not interfere with neighboring properties. That's not something that the zoning board really is involved in, although we have people here who work for planning and development and can also talk to you about specific concerns that you may have, but obviously, buildings are constructed and torn down repeatedly in congested areas, and we do everything we can to make sure that there is no impact on any neighboring properties.
You're right. Well, you're looking at it from the back, it just looks like a totally common shared wall between us. It's not like there's any space, it just, you know, just bricks. So I'm, I'm not an architect, I'm not, you know, a general contractor, but to me, I would think it's going to affect us some way, and I'd like to, you know, be able to find out how and what they're going to do.
I mean, if Mr. Mayewski would like to...
Yeah, I definitely would like to just, you know, address, because I totally understand your concern, and, and what we intend to do, that's one of the main reasons why we don't have a basement on the project, is that if we have a basement, then we have to really worry about what you have in your building, if you have a basement or don't have a basement. And fundamentally, we're not going to go down to that level, so by only building at the first floor and building a new wall in front of your wall, so it won't touch your wall, there'll actually be a gap between you and that wall, and the wall that we will build will be completely separated from both you on the east side and the other building on the west side.
But existing right now, there doesn't appear to be any gap, so we're doing demolition...
Yeah, so if, if, if between, if it's different than we, we think over right next to your building, then your wall would actually be abandoned in place, and we would build a new wall next to it. So we would not rely on an existing party wall to bear on for a new building. So there, I would, first of all, I'd tell you that that would be the case. Probably, there's a good chance that there actually is a separation between the two different widths of brick, and as we'd go through and take it down, then your building would be untouched, it's just kind of been hidden underneath. So we can really walk you through this in detail, and you're right, maybe this isn't the right place, but I just want, want him to make sure that he knows that we're very sensitive to it. The other thing that always happens during construction is that we typically would ask your permission to actually put a monitor inside of your space and go through your whole space, video it, tape it, take, take pictures of it, so that we know the condition it was in before. If some damage was to occur, then we would understand exactly what's happened. So the monitor is there for shaking and vibration, but by not putting a basement in, we're not having to underpin your building or pound in shoring, you know, when you hear that pounding noise and that vibration, that is what we're trying to avoid by just building a building that doesn't have a basement.
Okay.
So we'll definitely be more happy to meet with you and walk you through this as a part of the project.
Sure. Thank you. Was there anybody else who wished to speak to us tonight on this matter? Seeing no other hands, that takes us back to Mr. Mayewski, if you'd like to sum it up for us.
Just really appreciate everybody's time, and we hope we've done a good job of explaining... Just really appreciate everybody's time, and we hope we've done a good job of explaining the need for the two different variances that we're seeking. We understand the dilemma with parking, but we would stress that there is an existing building on the structure. It happens to be two, one-story plus. We're actually putting back something that's slightly larger, but we really just do not have the ability to put the parking spaces on that piece of property. And we really hope that we understand that it is a balance, and I think the neighbors were very good in saying that, because on one hand, we want to be as extremely respectful as we can to the neighborhood and the neighbors. On the other hand, we know that the goal of Davis Street in the downtown area is to increase traffic and to increase the environment for restaurants, business, and having kind of the balance between the two. We're way under the FAR for what could be proposed or built on this building, and we'll kind of keep it at that for a long time. So, we hope that we've found the right balance. We're not trying to maximize the size of the building, we're trying to find a respectful size that would work for this smaller-scale piece of property and fit into the community. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will go ahead and close the record and begin deliberations. Again, I will just remind the board members that we are not looking at a special use, although restaurants have been discussed this evening. We are looking at two specific variances, that being the rear yard setback and the off-street parking, or, I'm sorry, the onsite parking spaces, of which zero are proposed for 31, and a rear yard setback of, I believe we're at 10 feet, is that where we met it out on this? 9.9 feet. So, with that, I will ask any board members that have comments, questions, concerns.
I just, my two cents is, with respect to the, we'll call it 10-foot setback, but nine, nine-foot, nine-inch setback, it strikes me, if I understand the situation correctly, that that setback is where the current building is, up to the loading dock, and that it would probably be impractical to require the 15-foot setback without having some kind of crazy extension of the loading docks, which doesn't seem to make much sense. So, that one doesn't faze me very much. I, when I read the materials and in listening to the concerns of the neighbors, the parking strikes me as being potentially problematic. That said, you know, it's consistent with the city's plans to increase the business in this district, and having a building sitting that's not being used doesn't further that. It seems to be a great use of the space. It brings back restaurants that Evanstonians, including myself, were fond of. And I do think that we can at least alleviate some of the parking concern by conditioning, by implementing conditions that restrict employees from parking and street parking, as well as from the use of any kind of valet parking on-street as well. So, and I, and I don't think any business really could expect to move into that space without facing the same type of parking problem. So, it strikes me that the best we can do is try to condition it and move forward while continuing to increase the business use of the district.
Last thing I want to, oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, last thing I want to see in D2 is off-site parking. I'm completely against any kind of off-site parking, so there's, there's plenty of parking available in the downtown core. I don't, I don't foresee, I, I'm, I understand you guys have concerns, I know you do, but that's, we're, we're a dense downtown commercial district. They can use valet, they can, I just don't see...
Walk down the street.
Yeah. Yeah. I just don't see that as an issue at all.
I just have a couple questions. So, to the west of your building, that's not a nighttime business, that's to the west of your proposed structure?
It's a sound studio.
With very little traffic.
I think they probably do, well, they don't even, their front door is locked all the time. It's not even really a, you know, walk-by kind of business there. You schedule an appointment if you're a musician or cutting a commercial, and you record, you know, studio time there. So, they, they, I mean, there's a neighbor here, I've already had conversations with them, because, you know, we want to be a good neighbor, and they record and they need soundproofing and all that, we're gonna impact them. And so, I've already had conversations with them, saying, you know, "We're gonna cause some noise, but how can we, you know, work together to mitigate our impact upon you?" So, that business is, it doesn't draw traffic.
And it's not really like a nighttime business?
Yeah.
And then, my other question was, your neighbor to your east is these guys, so that's the lot you were talking about in the back?
Yeah, I was gonna grab him.
I just wondered, was that the same place you were talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That was my question.
All right.
Thank you.
I agree with previous comments. I don't think it's that parking will be an issue. It will benefit the city lot to have additional traffic to it. You know, having additional restaurants, fantastic. Bring back beloved restaurants, so it's a win-win in my mind.
I felt very similarly when initially reading the documents and seeing that someone doesn't want to put 31 parking spaces that are required in. I was a little taken aback, but at the same time, I think the biggest impact that we're going to see in terms of parking is going to be when the space above is used. I think that we can recommend conditions that will help alleviate that. I also would encourage the, the owner, operator of the establishment to reach out to the city and find out if there's some sort of a, a special rate they can get through offering people parking in the garage. I don't know if the city does that sort of stuff, but obviously, anything we can do to make the garages more attractive than trying to drive around and find on-street parking and take it away from the people who are living in the neighborhood, definitely works to our advantage. And the, in terms of the, of the rear yard setback, I mean, we're, we're not encroaching any further than we already are. I do like the, the fact that on the front of the building, we do have the setback to help lessen some of the mass of the building. And again, just commenting that this is surrounded primarily by, by our downtown core areas. There are some residential areas that do a butt it, but obviously, this is the type of establishment we would expect to see going in along a major commercial corridor like Davis Street. So, that's my general comments. As mentioned before, we do have to find that standards have been met, and, hold those up. And so, this being requests for major variations, and again, not a special use, we'll go through those standards. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. We have had some neighbors come to us this evening and address parking issues as being the major concern that I'm hearing. I think that through conditioning and our recommendation, we can help to alleviate those, those problems by asking city council to consider the use of valet for special events, and to ask the owner and the city to talk together about special use of the garage, if there's something that can happen there. And we've also heard discussion that the, the owner wants to talk with one of the neighbors about possibly using space that is, that is on their property for, for parking as well. So, I believe that this standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. We, we do know that our downtown core area is where we expect to see the greatest concentration, and having restaurants and retail establishments are the type of businesses that we would expect to find in this area. Also commenting that the fact that the, the owner is a longtime operator of businesses in Evanston, is familiar with the area, and is well-loved. Obviously, he is, is making a stake to stay in Evanston, and the zoning ordinance does look to try to draw in businesses and retain the businesses that we do have. So, I believe that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. As we've discussed, trying to fit 31 parking spaces into this area would be detrimental in one way or another, whether it would be curb cuts on Davis Street, trying to put parking above restaurants, which increases the overall height and density, or going into a basement for a subterranean parking, which could have the impact of affecting a number of establishments. Obviously, there just is not any place for, for parking to go, and in terms of the, of the rear yard setback, we are, are not changing the setting there at all, so I believe standard number three also has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Obviously, as I just mentioned, trying to fit 31 parking spaces on here would probably make a, a space like this infeasible in terms of not allowing for much space for the actual businesses to occur, and therefore, I believe that standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, or while the granting of the variation will result in additional income to the applicant, and while the applicant for the variation may not have demonstrated that the application is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, the ZBA or city council finds that there are public benefits to the surrounding neighborhood and the city as a whole that will be derived from the approval of the variation. So, while I went into that big, long explanation, it's because we do realize this is a money-making venture. Obviously, by adding a second story that will host events, is a profitable business. But at the same time, when we look at whether somebody will extract income from the, from the proposal or not, one of the things we look at is, does it benefit the city? Are there benefits to the, to the community as a whole? And typically, when we find businesses that are coming in, they are meeting a certain need within the community, and so I believe that standard number five also has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Obviously, this is a property which has existed for some time, it is being repurposed. Normally, we would like to see the building as it stands converted in some way, but understanding that there has been some damage to the existing structure, it does make sense to sort of begin fresh here. And all of those conditions exist because of something that happened before what we're talking about tonight, so standard number six, I believe, also has been met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board. The fact that we are not seeing an increase in the overall building size in terms of the footprint on the building, we're maintaining the roughly 9.9 to 10-foot setback, and the fact that we're not, we're not generally creating a larger, more massive building, I believe makes standard number seven also met. Does everyone agree with my findings on the standards?
Yes.
With that, I will ask if there is a motion in regard to 1026 Davis Street.
I'll move in matter ZBA 14ZMJV-0063 regarding 1026 Davis Street, that we recommend that city council grant, city council grant the variations requested, but with the following conditions, that employees, that the street parking on Davis Street not be used by employees of the establishments, nor for valet parking purposes by the establishments, and that the property be otherwise developed in accordance with the documents and testimony given.
Before I ask for a second, there was discussion about valet parking being used for events, and I would amend what was just stated to limit it not just to Davis Street. Obviously, we don't want employees parking on any of the residential streets, which is an even greater concern than parking on commercial streets. I would, I would...
Thanks. So that, yeah, I guess, so that employees of the establishments and uses by the establishments not utilize street parking for those purposes.
It's been moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of recommending approval of 1026 Davis Street to city council, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? With five in favor and no opposition, you will get a favorable recommendation from this board to city council, and zoning staff will let you know when that's going to be moving through for them to hear.
Good luck.
I'm gonna give just a moment for people to move out. And with that, we move on to our third case and final case for this evening, which is 1825 Greenwood Street and 1409 Dodge Avenue. I will ask that that be read into the record, please.
Thomas Heskin, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to add a second-story addition and attached garage to a single-family residence and convert an automobile, automobile repair service establishment into a two-family residence with a second-story addition. The applicant requests to establish two principal structures on one lot where one principal structure is allowed, zoning code section 6416B, as well as the following for the single-family residence, which is commonly known as 1825 Greenwood Street. A 14.4-foot front yard setback where 27 feet is required, zoning code section 6857A1 for the second-story addition. An 8.5-foot street-side yard setback where 15 feet is required, zoning code section 6857A2 for the attached garage. A 1.9-foot east interior side yard setback where 5 feet is required, zoning code section 6857A3 for the second-story addition, as well as the following for the two-family residence, commonly known as 1409 Dodge Avenue. A 1.7-foot east interior side yard setback where 5 feet is required, zoning code section 6857A3 for the second-story addition. A 6.6-foot rear yard setback where 25 feet is required, zoning code section 6857A4 for the second-story addition. And a two, and two onsite parking spaces where three parking spaces are required, zoning code section 61635. The zoning board, Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted May 30th, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey, site plan, elevations, images of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, spark draft meeting minutes of June 11th, 2014, and June 25th, 2014. Plan commission draft meeting minutes excerpt regarding the pending map amendment for the property from June 11th, 2014, as well as a letter passed out at the beginning of the meeting in opposition to the project.
Thank you. At this point, if the applicant would like to come up, I'm going to ask that anybody who may speak to us on this matter be sworn at this time by raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. If you'd begin by telling us your name and address, please.
Tom Heskin, 2101 Mary Jane Lane, Park Ridge, Illinois.
Thank you. And if you would tell us, please, about the project.
It's a combination of a single-family home that's fairly dilapidated, the windows were boarded up and in need of much repair, and it's also a mechanic shop that also is fairly well-dilapidated. And the location of the property pretty much prohibits it for any commercial development based on the fact, I examined several options, and when considering all options, I thought the most feasible option was to convert it into residential, and I first consulted with the alderman, and he agreed on that, and as a result, I based my, my goal to proceed under that basis. And at that time, I worked with an architect that has experience with the city, and I talked to the zoning plan parties involved and asked them for their guidance in regards to what would be accepted, what wouldn't be accepted. So, with that said, there were some changes that were suggested that we've made all along the way. Unfortunately, there are some setbacks. The single-family home that exists doesn't have the proper setbacks from the property line, and as a result, when we do a second-floor addition, there'll be variations requested for there for both the front home and for the rear conversion of the mechanic shop to the two townhomes as well.
All right. Thank you. Couple of questions for you. So... So the property that sits at 1825 Greenwood is the single-family home. The proposed second-story addition that you are going to add on, are you changing the footprint of the building at all?
No, we're not.
Or are you merely building on first floor?
Just going straight up.
Except for the new attached garage.
And then on the second property, which is the current mechanic shop located on Dodge Avenue, will the footprint be changing at all on that property?
No, it won't be changed on that property either.
Okay. So we're not really building anything in addition outward, we're all going upward on everything?
Correct. As Mrs. Klatt's mentioned, though, on the front home, we're just doing the attached garage.
Why is that? What's the current parking situation for the Greenwood property?
There is none. There was a concrete pad in back. There's an excessive amount of concrete in back, which we will be removing. So I'm assuming, I assume that that was a shared parking between the mechanic shop and the single-family residence.
I have a question. How long have you owned the property?
I would say approximately six months.
Six months, okay. Because before, the business that was there attracted a lot of crime to the area, and a residential structure would be a lot better for that location. But there's going to have to be substantial rehabilitation to turn that car mechanic shop into two residences, right?
Correct. And we've addressed those issues. Originally, we had made proposals to have the driveways go out onto Dodge, but because of the possibility of problems with traffic, it was suggested that we re-divert it and utilize the side of the building and bring everything out into the alley, which we're now doing. So realistically, there will be no more access to Dodge Street whatsoever.
From those houses, from those two houses that you're going to build, the two residential structures you're going to build?
And the same would also be pertaining to the front home as well.
Oh, the home that's on Greenwood?
Correct.
To clarify, there is currently a large curb cut off of Dodge, and the applicant has worked extensively with staff through multiple site plans to come up with a plan that has the minimal amount of impervious surface and has all access off of either the alley or Greenwood Street rather than Dodge.
Okay. And you're not going to tear down the existing car shop to build this residential, the two residential?
No, just build right on top of it.
You're going to build on top of it?
Correct.
You're going to use the same foundations?
How many square foot is going to be the two-family residences? How many square feet is that going to be? Because that's a funny-shaped building on that lot right now. I'm just wondering.
If I remember correctly, the way we have it proposed, it's going to be, the first floor will just be one unit. And if I remember correctly, I think that'll be approximately 900 square feet, maybe between 900 and 1,200. And then the second floor, based on the fact, there won't be a deduction for the parking, that may be roughly 1,500 square feet. I'm not sure if we have the square feet posted on the plat or not, but the second-floor unit would be a larger unit because of the fact there won't be a deduction for the two-car garage.
And that large concrete slab that used to be the driveway of the mechanic shop is going to be the yard?
They'll all become grass. And all there'll be just two sidewalks going out to the existing public sidewalk.
Okay. Just wondering.
Melissa, can you clarify, there's a note in the spark minutes that mentions that the garage has been relocated 27 feet back from the property line? Is that a revision in the plan?
It is. An earlier version had the garage further back on the single-family residence with access off of Dodge. So in an effort to minimize the impervious surface with the smallest driveway possible to Greenwood, the garage has been pulled forward as much as possible while still complying with the setback.
So does that change the variations that are being sought?
No, the variance relating to the garage is the street-side yard setback off of Dodge, and that remains the same.
I will note for the record that we have had included in our packet a draft of minutes from the plan commission. There has been a proposed map amendment, which I don't believe has been approved yet. Is that correct, or has it?
Correct. Pending a recommendation tonight, both the map amendment and the variance request will move forward to PND on July 14th.
I will just state that I'm not particularly thrilled with this, because I feel that we're putting ourselves into a situation that we had a big discussion on last week, or last time we got together, because we have two common properties on the same lot, different How long before those seek to be separated, creating two substandard lots? I do know that-
Each of these would have their own parking. I think what we're referencing is-
But what we're doing is, we're sort of creating substandard lots again, which city council did not have an issue with doing in the last case. However, I do have an issue with it, even though city council can decide what to do with it. But that's just my general feeling on this particular project. I'm not opposed to residential projects being put in. It's just one of the things that we look at quite often is, what are we creating that could potentially cause us problems down the road? And so that's just a general statement that no one has to respond to. I do know that we have someone else who wants to speak to us tonight on the issue. So I will ask if there are any other questions for Mr. Heskin for right now. We'll bring you back up at the end. But I saw someone else had a hand up, and we want to give them an opportunity to speak as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could give us your name and address, please.
Patrick Stain. I'm at 1418 Darrell Avenue in Evanston. I've been living in that neighborhood forever. So I know the history of that property. And I like the idea that the current owner, the owner previously is gone. That was a headache. I'm not the only user of that alley to get to Dodge Avenue. I live in the 14 little block, which is common alley between Greenwood and Lake, right there. And I'm not clear as to what the use of the property was, is developed. I'm sure the man lives in Park Ridge, wherever he lives. So it'll be rental property for him, or to be sold, offered, what it's probably going to be with it, right? So therefore, he makes his money, goes about his business. Leave the problem behind, parking being one, use of the alley being the second. That area gets congested at times, and has been known to, well, a lot of offenders in traffic pattern coming off of the high school, and coming in both directions. So Mr. Rogers indicated that, what are you doing with having two different addresses and property on the same lot, so to speak? And not being clear as to how these things were developed. Will it be rented out to Section 8 people, or more than that, what the deal is? So my objection is the use of the property as rental. If it goes sold, and then not only we use it rental, but the parking spaces that are not there. The curb on Greenwood prohibits entrance to the attached garage right now, unless there be significant changes to make that more feasible, okay? What would be the entrance to the attached garage for the property on Greenwood? And what would be the entrance and exit for the property on Dodge Avenue? Which seems to be, if I heard it correctly, you will seal off that area, turn that area that's now cemented to grass. So how do you get in and out? I'm not the only user of that alley, and my neighbors use it as well. And they are more than happy to voice some opinion on some of their beheads right now. Okay? So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Well, I'm just not sure. Good comments. I just want to make sure, perhaps you can get a copy of the packet.
Mm-hmm.
Show the access to the garage, the proposed garage off of Greenwood access, and the parking for the apartments over the former garage auto repair shop would be off the alley.
That's a problem. Off the alley, there's only one alley there that runs between Dodge and Darrell.
And so-
The access, the alley's very narrow.
Are there other people who use the alley typical to other residents in Evanston?
Yes.
Who use alleys?
Yes. Most of the garages back there, most of the people who own property on Darrell or on Dodge use the alley to get access to the garage.
So this would be one more person accessing the garage?
One more. You have you building, probably making another structure out of what was a East Bay garage, and you go make an apartment, or turn it into a condo, or whatever you're going to do with it, townhouse? You making three parking structures back there, that's three cars, plus whoever they're going to bring with them. I've been there long enough to know that it would be a problem. It was a problem before, and if this goes in its vein, it will come up again, guaranteed. There were some of us who wanted to buy that property, but we realized that it was going to cost much to develop it. I'm glad he has deep pockets, I don't.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Was there anybody else who wanted to speak to us? Mr. Heskin, if you'd like to come back up, please.
In reference to his comments, it's going to be just a two-unit townhome. And as the drawing shows, it'll be two single-car garages that will be utilizing the alley. The previous owner had the mechanic shop that had, you know, there's previous aerial photographs, five, six cars parked. And then I'm assuming there was much more traffic because of all the vehicles coming and going as the previous establishment was being utilized. So taking it from its current, its previous status and developing two residential nice townhomes, that would be applicable to the area, which would increase the value of the surrounding homes. I think that would be much more suitable to the area than having that mechanic shop, which from what I was told was nothing but a problem for the area with the police and everything associated with it.
Can you please comment on the question that the gentleman had about the use of the property? Are you planning to rent the three units between the two?
No, the single-family, we plan on just selling the single-family as a single-family, and the two townhomes in the rear would be sold strictly as two single townhomes.
But there are currently one single lot?
It's one large lot. The mechanic shop has its own PIN, property index number, and the single-family home has its own PIN. And when I purchased it, the plat shows it has two separate parcels.
So it is two separate parcels?
Correct.
It is one property.
Has it's been consolidated?
No, it was never subdivided. It is one property, but with two PIN numbers.
So the comments Matt made earlier, I tend to agree with him. It makes me a little bit nervous to treat a property as though it's two separate ones and creates potential issues down the road.
It could be treated as a condominium or something along those lines, because obviously, you know, I live in a condominium with 25 units. We all have our separate pins. We're all on the same zoning lot, though.
Right. But it also could be developed like a condominium, which is a little bit different than having two separate structures on one lot with-
No, they could be separate condominiums, different buildings.
You can have townhomes or condominiums that are separate structures with on the same lot, all of which would have separate pins and everything.
I would just like to add that at one of the previous meetings, there's other folks from the neighborhood that came, and they were happy to hear what we were doing. And they also voiced the concern of wanting to verify that it was not going to be Section 8. And I did reiterate at that point in time as well that there was no intention whatsoever to have it set up for Section 8.
Yeah, and I don't want you to think that we are not happy to see development going on and obviously creating residential over anything else. Like I stated, my main concern is just, we just had a case recently, and this is the second case I was thinking of when I said, don't we have a second one coming? Where somebody was looking to divide the property because there were two structures on it, which then created substandard lots, which we constantly, as you heard this evening, we had somebody come with a substandard lot who wanted to do something, but there's nothing that can be done because the property is small. So it's not that we are not happy to see residential development. I know this particular corner, I know that with the high school being there, that there is congestion. I also know that this was a problem corner, as it were. So I don't want you to take away anything that we are not pleased to see development happening.
The unique thing about this property is that, so it's got a residential part and some other use already combined with it. So it is a unique situation, no matter how we look at it. The difference between this particular site and the ones that I think we've had in recent memory is that this is the area, you know, these are areas, pockets in Evanston, where we definitely want to provide more continuity, residential continuity, and this is an opportunity for it. And yes, it does present some sort of risk to, you know, this board in terms of allowing substandard lots, but I think the greater benefit is there in that it provides better residential options in this part of the community. And eliminates an eyesore and overall social sore within that community as well.
I agree with what you're saying. The business was a problem, and residential would be very welcome. But is there going to be parking for the two-story behind, off the alley? Is that what you're saying?
Actually, if you look up, I had him bring this up.
It's in the drawings.
There's two parking spaces-
Included.
That are in the envelope of the building. So the first floor is the one on the right that goes into the main living space there below it. And then the one to the left goes up the stairs to the second-floor unit.
And they share the alley? They come out the alley?
Yep. But they're totally recessed inside the building.
Any other comments that you'd like to make?
I'm just glad I was given the opportunity to respond to the gentleman.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. With that, and seeing no one else who wishes to speak to us this evening, we will go ahead and close the record, begin our deliberations. As I stated earlier, this one I'm kind of torn on because of the fact that I foresee what's going to happen in the future. But at the same time, I am pleased to see residential development going in in this particular area to create a more stable environment. Like I said, this particular property has been recognized as having several problems associated with it, which the creation of residential would- which the creation of residential would alleviate. But I will ask everybody else kind of what their general thinking is on things.
I think it's worth the risk. If the risk is that we're going to have a meeting in the future that somebody wants to invest further on this property along Dodge, then I'm all for it.
I agree.
Agreed.
I don't have any comments further than what I've said.
All right. As mentioned in the other two cases, we have a set of standards that we must find are met in order to make our recommendation to City Council. And give me just a moment while I bring those up. So number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. I believe that this particular standard has been met. We've had some discussion about how, obviously, bringing in residential properties to this particular area would create a much more stable environment than the existing business that was there. So I believe that this standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Anybody else like to take this one? This is the one that I have the biggest problem with because of where I can see this potentially going or not going. I mean, I know I have a real problem creating the potential for substandard lots. If this came before us as a condominium property or as something that was somehow maintaining a single structure, I would not have as much of a problem with it.
Is he proposing apartments or condos?
He's proposed townhomes.
Rental or condo?
And I believe, my understanding was that they were for sale. I can't, he's just nodding his head. He's not talking. So I have not reopened the record.
So there is going to be an owner assessment group? So it is a condo?
Not necessarily. I would propose that it be set up as such. And if it can be set up as such, I do not have a problem with this particular project. So perhaps if someone would like to condition that, I could be in favor of this.
I think that's a great solution, and it would address my concern. I would also, at least unless I misunderstand things, I would say, I don't think that we can possibly say that this is within the intent of the zoning ordinance unless the mapping change is also made. So I would condition our deliberation on that.
Obviously, yes. Anything that we're deciding is with the assumption that the map amendment would also move forward at the same time. That's kind of already been approved pending our approval of a project.
It's a chicken and egg.
Yes.
I hear what you're saying, but, you know, developing a condo property, I mean, that's a whole nother can of worms for the builder, the gentleman, Mr. Heskin, and, you know, potential buyers. I don't know. Condos are not so fun these days with this real estate market. I, as you know, in that last case, didn't really have, I thought that condos were one possible solution, but I also didn't actually have a problem with the potential of a substandard lot being created. So that's probably kind of where I stand on this, too.
I have to say, I'm looking forward to the residential development of this property. And I feel like that the condo issue, although I think it could be worked out a little bit better as a condo for this. I also didn't have an issue with the other lady. I understood what she was saying about she just wanted to sell off her half and maintain her economics. So I understood what she was saying. But I also hear what you're saying with the substandard lot. And the condo is a good solution. It's a good proposal.
I mean, the reason I'm looking at that is because that keeps the lot intact.
Right.
And doesn't create headaches for a future zoning board. So obviously, we are a recommending board, are a recommending body at this point. So if people are amenable to making a recommendation that a condo is-
Yeah, you want to throw on a-
Homeowners Association of some sort of explored.
You want to throw on a condition that's-
Then I can find that number two has been met.
You can live with that?
Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Obviously, we've discussed how this is something that already has two separate PINs. It's had an operating business behind a residence. They have two specific addresses. So there's a number of issues that already exist and are not common to lots in Evanston. So I feel that number three has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. If the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out, I believe that trying to develop this property in some way, obviously, there are numbers that have to work in order to make it work. And setting it up as three living units, obviously, is what kind of needs to happen in order to make this work for this particular gentleman. So I believe that standard number four has been met. Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property or that other long part that I read earlier about public benefits. Obviously, there is a public benefit to creating residential housing and creating stability within a neighborhood by having homeowners, as opposed to renters, which is not necessarily, I don't want to imply that renting is a bad thing. But obviously, people who have purchased property have an invested interest in the properties around them. So I believe that this standard has been met because of public benefit that is created. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. We heard testimony that the gentleman purchased the property within the last year, and the conditions existed as that beforehand. They have existed for some number of years before even that time. So that standard has been met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the ZBA. We have had discussion about the amount of change in the footprint. And it appears that those additions that will be made tend to go up, with the exception of the garage, as opposed to out. And so we are not seeing a drastic increase in the footprint of the property. And the fact that parking is provided for all living units to self-contained within the townhomes and the garage that is with the main house. And so I believe that that standard also has been met. With that, having walked through the standards, does everyone agree with my findings on standards?
Yes.
Yes. So being in agreement on standards, I will ask if there is a motion for a recommendation to City Council on 1825 Greenwood and 1409 Dodge.
Do you want to maybe make the motion, Matt?
I really can't make the motion as a chair.
Oh, all right. Then I will make the motion.
The only condition that I would say is that the homeowner association option be explored.
Yeah, right. So I'll move in the matter ZBA 14ZMJV-0065 with regard to the properties at 1825, or a single property at 1825 Greenwood Street and 1409 Dodge, that we recommend that the City Council grant the variations requested, but give due consideration to the zoning board's concern that this proposal creates some potential havoc with respect to the future subdivision of the lot and creation of substandard lots and condition the granting of the variations appropriately, perhaps based on a requirement that they be developed as a condominium or some other form of homeowner association that requires the lots to be kept together.
It has been moved. And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recommend approval of 1825 Greenwood Street, 1409 Dodge Avenue, with the condition as stated. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, it moves forward with five votes in the affirmative. So an affirmative recommendation to City Council. With that, we conclude our business for this evening. Does anyone have any matters to bring before the board?
I'd like to note that our next meeting is July 15. We do have a full agenda. So your attendance is appreciated. And also, earlier today, I sent an email to all of you regarding the Illinois APA Conference this October that is in Evanston. There is a training session available for board and committee members. There's a link with more information in the email. So feel free to check it out and let me know if you're interested.
Yeah, I just want to note for the July 15 meeting, as I think I emailed you, but I'm out of town for about 30 days, starting that day exactly.
I do have one last matter to bring up, which is, as some of you may or may not know, we have rules of procedure, which I think most of you have, but maybe not all of you. They have not been updated for some time. And the last time we did, it was quite a painful, months-long thing. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask to have staff send everyone the latest copy of the rules for procedure. There are some things in here which obviously need to be corrected. There are some things which probably should be addressed and are not addressed. And there are some things which are addressed, which probably don't need to be in our rules anymore. But so I'll ask everyone to take a look through them and forward to staff anything that they see where there might be rules or change for improvement, where we can move to sort of streamline things and things that will make us more effective and efficient as a board.
Do you know, or can someone speak to, whether staff has any recommendations for edits to the procedures?
We will be asking them for those as well.
Maybe it makes sense to have that all come together? In other words, the existing ones plus any suggested changes?
What I'd like to do actually is to get everyone on the board to send theirs into staff, and then we'll composite from that. So we have one working document to go from. And then, much in the same way that any bylaws or anything else would be amended, we would come with a list of recommended changes, which then can either be approved, denied, or discussed. But just to try to streamline it instead of making this a months-long procedure. So with that, I will ask that staff, please send that out to everyone on the board in the next couple of days. And then if we can work to get any proposed changes, things like that in, by like the 18th of July, so we have time to composite something together. So maybe by our first meeting in August, we can look at sort of what concerns people have, what we want to change, what needs to change, that sort of stuff. All right? So with that, is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
For the discussion, hearing none, we stand adjourned until our meeting on the 15th in Council Chambers at 7:30, or 7 o'clock.